Most teachers, in my experience from having kids across all levels, are not using the forty-five minute flex. So when it is not used, students are being taught, teacher instructed ninety minutes a week. So for a ninety-week quarter ending the end of, or a ninety-week quarter ending the end of the first quarter here, that means they've learned for eight hundred minutes, or approximately thirteen hours. On a normal school year, they would have learned for two thousand twenty-five minutes, or thirty-three hours. So it's a sixty percent reduction in class time at our student service. I challenge us to not continue this. Mr. Evans in the school board, give our children the best education possible. Do not let them continue to fall behind. Give teachers the opportunity to do what they do best, and that is teach our students in person five days a week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Thank you very much. We have another individual that wants to speak up, Ms. Callie Prince.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving me this opportunity tonight. My name is Callie Kmetz. I do have three children at the district. My daughter is in eighth grade, and my twins are in fourth grade. And I do not have factual information that Mr. Barrett had prepared tonight, but I'm simply here just to express that I'm thrilled to hear that we are going back to at least a hybrid method. At least in understanding, it's tentative, but very happy to hear that. After witnessing and being hard and being patient over the last several weeks of the remote learning, it is definitely a struggle. Speaking from personal experience only, of course, but all of my children have had moments where they've definitely struggled with it. It's just not an ideal situation in terms of teaching. I think teachers are really doing the best that they can, but you just happen to fall into, you know, getting lost for a second on remote learning. You know, when you're remote, if you lose the way that the teacher is instructing something, and you don't click on something correctly, it just kind of throws it all off. So I've had both my twins come up with tears and that they couldn't learn something, and it's just been honestly a frustrating time for all of us, especially, you know, students, teachers, parents alike. So while I'm thrilled to hear the hybrid method, I just encourage that you continue to try to see how we can get back to five days a week in the classroom. I also encourage just more communication around it all. I feel that, you know, back on July twenty-ninth at that board meeting, when the return to school proposal was laid out and we walked us through it, I walked you through it, it was very thorough and well thought out. We suddenly switched to the remote, a hundred percent remote within a few days after that was reviewed, and it just seems that that entire plan is sort of thrown off the window. If we can have a little bit of understanding as to, you know, the outlook in the coming weeks, and maybe revise that plan based on the level that the county is currently in, and what is it based around in terms of these decisions being made, in trying in an effort to get these kids back into the classroom. Secondly, I think just, you know, again, around communication. The, we were asked here recently to make the decision if our kids would, you know, A, come to engage in the hybrid method or stay remote, as well as around transportation, if they would take the public, or the school-provided transportation. While I appreciate that you're asking the parents to make this decision, there really wasn't, it was an analogy, it was not a knowledgeable decision for parents to make. There wasn't much around what was expected of the school. Mrs. Houchen did offer the opportunity for questions to be asked, of which she did do a good job in responding to those questions. But again, I think it's just been a little frustrating with, with understanding, you know, how we are getting, the methods being taken, and the reasons behind us getting back into the classroom, as to why, as well as to why we're going remote. So I just encourage some more, you know, communication to the parents, so we have better understanding, we can, you know, make knowledgeable decisions moving forward. Again, understand things are fluid, and I think, you know, for the most part, parents have been patient, but just encourage, encourage more communication around things. And Mr. Barrett, I just really encourage and challenge the school to bring other kids back in five days a week in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Thank you very much. That, those comments, larger, are going to segue into audio floor in the agenda, which is Mr. Barrett's discussion, and which is primarily going to be returned to school presentation. Mr. Evans, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. I hope that he answered some of the questions put forth here by Mr. Barrett and, and Mrs. Kmetz, and certainly thank you for your, for your input. I think I do, I will address some of them, maybe not all of them, as we do this. As we come back on our hybrid schedule, the first one that comes to mind, Mr. Barrett, is what, what you brought up was a well-defined determining factor. The determining factor, first of all, is getting back in school. Once we're in school, we're going to look at our local members within, within our buildings, knowing that you see a lot of things on the news right now that are happening in different districts and different counties, and some protocols that we're putting in place. Let me try to do this in somewhat of an organized manner. We are coming back to the hybrid, the Scarlet Ray, I just sent out the, we sent out additional information today on some, on the protocols. The Scarlet Ray cohorts will be set on Friday, and the individual class schedules will be set on Tuesday. And they're very much like what your student would have gotten during the summer, class schedule-wise. The, as we come back in the Scarlet Ray, the students will be back either Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, and then on the opposite days, they'll be, they'll, they'll be participating via Zoom. In the middle school, high school, we're relatively certain that's going to be a nine-period schedule, just like their schedule they would have gotten to start the school year. We haven't made changes in those schedules. We didn't alter. We kept all the specials in the, in the schedule, in the schedules. Elementary is going to look a little bit different because they've got to, they've got to rearrange some of the special classes. Elementary is going to be more geared toward the students not moving and people coming to the students versus the students movement in the building and try and cut down some of those things. And that's the first phase. My next two, there are two options that we can go to from there. The first option being that if we get back in building and we're doing this well, two days a week, then Wednesday will then be a day that everybody's in, both groups, and now we're three days a week. And that Wednesday, then we can get a gate with everybody in the building, one day a week, just to see how the movement is, to see, make sure we're covering our bases. There's a lot of unknowns with this, and I'll go through some of the protocols here in a little bit. Another option that's on the table that some other districts have, have done is that they brought the elementary students back first. They brought K to five back full-time before they brought the high school students back, because they're a little bit more self-sufficient on the, on the remote instruction, and it was more imperative to get some of those elementary students back in a building five days a week. I know Warrensville is going to that block, a couple other, I think Bay Village went to that block a little bit, where they brought the elementary back first, and then a week or two later brought the middle school, high school students back to see how that would function. That's how we're going to work towards getting them all back in the building. Once they're back in the building, I'm just going to use, and I hate to refer to the news too often, but Willoughby South was on TV today, and this morning, and they, the example they use at Willoughby South is one eighth grader tested positive, and they had to close the entire eighth grade down at Willoughby South. Now, a couple of things that factor into that. Number one is that Willoughby South is in Lake County, so they're dealing with a different county commissioner. Somebody asked, why would that not happen here? And I'm going to tell you a couple of reasons. One of, one of the ways that, one of the protocols that we're to come back to, the, the county board of health is recommending two protocols in place for the safety of students, and that's the spacing and masks. We're going to have a third, we have death shields that'll be in place, so we'll essentially have three protocols in place. I, I've been working with one person and one person only at the county board of health, because I know I'm going to get consistent answers from that person. They've got additional people, though, so when I call, I talk to, we, we had an instance where a family member tested positive two weeks ago and had been out of town and just came back into town. Did the family have to be quarantined, isolated? I had very detailed information from the parents. I got a very direct, detailed answer from that person at the county board of health. I have his direct number, he has my direct number. I'm going to deal with him particularly, because when I talked about the instance that just happened at Willoughby South two weeks ago, I said, if we have, if I've got a student in, in one of my old classrooms down here at the end of hall, and, and I've got a death shield, and I've got a face mask, and I've got them at least three foot apart, and they test positive, do the kids that are within six foot of them, are they automatically quarantined? And he said, no, based on the protocols that you're putting in place, they would not have to be quarantined. We would have to follow that student through the day, follow those protocols to see where else they came in contact with students. But in that instance, and I was online with, of the thirty-some superintendents in the county, probably twenty-five or twenty-six of us were online when we had this discussion with the county board of health. So we've been kind of checking boxes as to what we can do that will take us and put us in a safer place. So once we're back in, that we won't have to be back out because of, Independence had the one middle school student that, the football player, and then they, they shut the whole eighth grade down for two weeks. I talked to the superintendent, that was a difficult two weeks for that grade level, because they weren't ready to be remote. So we're trying to avoid those types of situations. So we, we put protocols in place, so once we've got kids back in, we can keep kids back in, knowing that there's a real strong possibility at some point in time, somebody, student or staff, is going to test positive, then we quarantine that person, isolate that person, without having to shut down a whole grade level, a whole building, the whole district. And, and the example I used several weeks ago, when we first got back, when students were first getting back, North Royalton's band had a positive test member. They, they quarantined immediately seventy members of the band that Friday night. Now, after discussions through the weekend and come Monday morning, the county board of health backed off of that and only quarantined about five or six students after they did a little contact tracing, so there was no need to quarantine all that number of students. But if we put protocols in place to prevent that from happening, we're going to be in a best-case scenario. As I translate that scenario to our district, know that we have sixth through twelfth graders in our band. And, and if a band member tests positive, now we're dealing with not four grade levels, we're dealing with six or seven grade levels sometimes. So we have to make sure that we've got things in place, so we can isolate that students' movements and do what we need to do to get the information to the county board of health, so that we can continue to operate without shutting the whole thing down. And, and this arose out of some school districts in southwest Ohio, where had, Mason is an example. Mason's got twenty-seven thousand students. They've had two-hundred-and-fifty students quarantined since the start of this. Of the two-hundred-and-fifty students quarantined, only two of those students ended up testing positive for COVID. They both lived in households where other members of the family had already tested positive. So the point came up is, why are so many kids getting quarantined? And I think that's an overabundance on the, on the county boards of health to say, we're just going to, if we're going to make mistakes, we're going to overdo it versus underdo it. So we're trying to put more protocols in place so that those students then are included in that contact tracing as we go through this. And, and I'll go through a few of those right now, and without taking all night to do that, but the daily health checks are going to be important. And we just had a talk with that, with our maintenance staff today, but the daily health checks. Parents not sending students when they're exhibiting a couple symptoms during the day. Teachers staying home when they don't feel well, just to not run the risk of exposing. Everybody's going to be in masks, students, staff, everybody. Well, we, we see, if you're in the hallways, we're already starting to put some sign markings out already. When students report to school, they're going to report to designated areas. The elementary students, when they come in, they're going to go directly to their classroom. The middle school, high school, if you've been in here in the morning, you know that there's, students will kind of socialize, they'll be in the hallways. We're going to, students are going to go to designated areas. We're going to use the south gym, we're going to use the cafeteria, we're going to use the auditorium. So as students enter the building, they're going to have to go to their designated area, so we're not going to have that socialization time that we've, we've had here to cut down on, on some of those interactions. And then they'll be released by grade level to their, to their classes. Assigned seats, assigned seats, as simple as that sound, is huge when it comes to contact tracing. If someone tests positive, we can go back through every class and know who was within that radius, but also know what protocols that we had in place, so that when I, and I'm the one that has to call the county board of health. I'm the contact person. So when I make that phone call and I run through that list, I, I, I'm speaking one-to-one with that person. Bus transportation, students with a mask, no more than two to a seat. We're going to try and seat family members together. That won't be a problem with the twins, I don't think, Colleen, but, you know, they've done it before, they could do it again. But, but assigned seats as well on the buses, too, again, just for that kind of control. Every bus at its conclusion of its run will get sanitized. So we run a real tight bus schedule in the morning. When the middle school, high school kids get dropped, they usually immediately leave to make their elementary run. We're going to have additional cleaning staff that's going to go on those buses and sanitize them before we send them off for that next run. Drop-off and pickup is going to change a little bit. I'll drop off and pick up if students will be southbound on East Seventy-First Street. So a lot of people come traditionally north. We're not going to allow anybody to turn into the elementary lot from, from the coming northbound. They're going to have to come down here to the high school lot, turn around, and drop the students off on the curbside, southbound. This will keep traffic flowing, and it won't block up the, the in-and-out areas. The buses will still release in the back. Again, talked about designated areas. Hallways and common areas, as I said, in the elementary building, those students are going to remain in their homerooms for the majority of the day. High school and middle school, just because of some of the class makeups, we, we're, we're going to move students. We're adding additional travel time in between classes, so students can get to the washroom, can wash their hands. We're also going to stagger bell schedules a little bit, so kids are not in the hallways at the same time. Lunchroom, again, we're going to dismiss by grade level, so we're not on top of each other. High-touch areas, we're going to have additional cleaning staff. High-touch areas will be continually gone over throughout the course of the day. In each of the classrooms, masks will be worn. Again, I went over the three protocols that we're going to have in place. Some areas, it's easier. In, in the elementary building and down in the, what was the pot area, the open areas, we can, we can get six-foot of spacing over there very easily and accommodate that. It's a little bit tougher in some of the old parts. If you go up into third-grade classrooms, it's a little bit tighter up there. Down here at, at the north end of the building, our social studies and English teachers, it's a little tight in there. So we come back in the hybrid, it, it won't be a problem, but when we start bringing them back altogether, we're going to have to look at those rooms and, and see, and make sure that we're, we're in a good place with that. All of our rooms are cleaned every night to start with. We, we're going to bring additional part-time cleaning staff on to sanitize afterwards. In other words, our cleaning staff will come through, and they'll be followed by a sanitation crew that, that will sanitize, and that mist then stays on, on the surface and dries there. Some of our specials classes are going to have to change. Phys ed, because we can't use locker rooms, by order of the county health department, they're going to change up the curriculum a little bit. They're going to try to do some things where the students don't have to change. Music, we're still figuring some things out, because with the wind instruments, we have to have shields in place because of the spit that's involved in that. And Mr. Sokol and Mr. Michaels have worked with several other districts to come up with plans on that. Art, we know we can't share supplies, so we're talking to the art teachers. What do we have to do to make sure students have their own supplies in place, so we can, we can still do the things that we need to do with students? Actually, next week, some of our teachers are kind of chomping. I know the nineteenth is our comeback date. Some of our teachers have already planned next week to do online orientations with students. We've kind of given the green light to that, so teachers are going to be reaching out to students to try and meet in small groups with them and what have you. Some of our highest-needs students will be brought back first. Some of our special-needs students that, that, that need the structure of the four or five-day-a-week will be brought back first, on a first, first basis, as we start to bring students back in the building as well. Lunches, initially lunches are all going to be pre-bagged. There won't be hot meals to start with. They'll be on the table for pickup. We're going to use the shields in the lunchroom. We've already gone through the spacing in the lunchroom, and again, the high-touch areas out there. We're also weather permitting, we bought additional picnic tables for the elementary building, so as long as the weather's still good, students will be able to go outside and space and eat outside. We're going to allow students out in the stadium and space themselves out to eat lunch as well. Visitation, we're really going to try to keep visitation to a minimum. They need to be pre-arranged and have masks on, and just report to the office areas. We, we can't have adults kind of roam in the building. It's, you know, we've always, for many, many years, had an open-door policy here at Cogah Heights. If you were an alumni and you know you needed your transcripts from the, from the guidance office very much, very, very oftentimes, when they got in the building, we'd go directly to the guidance office. You really have to limit flow in the building during the course of the day. We have to have a quarantine area. We've designated areas a quarantine area, where students will report to. The nurses will check symptoms there. Parents will be called to let them know the number of symptoms that those students are exhibiting, and ask the parents to pick them up. We've also included the flow charts. The flow charts are put together by the county board of health with recommendations from the state board of health and the CDC. And, and if you want to know how we're going to react to the different symptoms, it's laid out on the flow charts. In other words, if they have two symptoms, we're going to follow this line down. And that's, I think you'll see that most of the districts and the county have those flow charts in place somewhat as well. We added this. This is a kind of a self-assessment protocol list, too. This actually helps us a little bit. As we know from looking at COVID-19, that many of the symptoms carry over into many other areas. Headache, nausea, vomiting, fatigue, muscle and body aches, fever, chills, new onset of nasal congestion, diarrhea, loss of smell, taste, sore throat, new onset of a cough, chest pain. Those are crossover things. And, and one of the things that we don't want, and I've been very emphatic with the nurses, and I said, I, I want them to assess symptoms and not diagnose. Nurses are not doctors. I don't want them diagnosing anything. And one of the examples that I use is that, you know, I've had, I've had allergies my entire life. So when they tell you a sore throat and sinus congestion is a, is a byproduct of COVID, for fifty-five years of my life, I've had a sore throat and sinus condition every fall. That doesn't mean I have COVID. It just means that it's something that I normally go to. So we, we have to make sure that we're assessing those in the right way, and that we're referring people to their doctors, and we're making sure that we're doing what we need to do on some of those ends. And there's also a kind of a daily health checklist, and this is very similar to what our, our coaches have been using and the band has been using when they check, when they check the students in for activities. And we're going to ask the parents to just kind of get in the habit of, those are kind of, that's going to kind of be the checklist before you put the students on the bus or before we drop them off during the day. I, I'm very confident that once we get the students back in the building on the nineteenth, that we're going to have good protocols in place, and then we'll monitor our numbers internally at that point in time. Aurora is a good example, where the county's red, and, and I agree. I talked to the superintendent, Mike, Mike, very frequently. Once they got the kids back in the building, they were able to get a better control over, over what they were doing. We're very, I'm, I'm very positive that we'll be in the same situation. And once we get the students back in, we're going to have the protocols in place that, whether we have an outbreak or not, we're going to be able to limit that, we're being, we're going to be able to isolate and identify that, and be able to continue to move on. The worst thing that would happen, could happen to us is to come back and have an outbreak, and then have to shut the whole district down a week later, because we had twenty cases in the county, all of a sudden quarantined seventy-five kids across five grades, which is not outside the realm of possibility, because of the, you know, we have middle school, high school combined here. So we're, we've gone, what I believe, above and beyond on some of those protocols, once we got them in place. So I know that doesn't answer all your questions that you put forth there. I think it answers some of those, and, and certainly I'm available to, and, and we're still continuing to work on things. We know that, as you, this is a fluid process. We get back in the district on, on that Monday or Tuesday, it's all hands on deck. We're going to be in the hallways, we're going to be in classrooms, we're going to be looking around. We're going to see what's working, what's not working. around. We're going to see what's working, what's not working. And we're going to be ready to make changes, to tweak things, to make sure that we can be back and be back safely. There's no worse place in the world to be than a school without kids in it. And I want them back as much as anybody does, quite honestly. People that know me know that I draw my energy from the kids being in the building. And that'll be a very, I'll resist and I won't be high-fiving kids in the hallway, I promise. But I'll be standing in my doorway with a smile on my face as they make their way through the hallway. Lockers, we're going to have lockers in place. We bought new lockers in the elementary. When we're back in the hybrid, we're going to be able to space them out because we'll be every other locker. We know who's coming back when. In the high school, we've already taped off lockers. It'll be every other locker. So, students will be able to bring stuff in. I know there's a big concern, especially with some of the elementary students. They got, those kids weigh 30 pounds and they're carrying 45 pounds of books with them. That's not a very healthy situation for them. They've got to be able to put some things in their locker and not drag book bags around that weigh more than they do all day long. We're taking those things into consideration as well. Water bottles, we need, we need parents to send to school water bottles. We're putting in water filling stations. We cannot, again, the department of health won't let us use water fountains right now. So, we're trying to address all those things, one thing at a time. And if you've been in the building now, you know that it's different than it was two weeks ago and it's different than it was four weeks ago. And we're spacing some classroom stuff out and we're putting shields up. And it's one day at a time. I know people get anxious because they say, why can't we just be back tomorrow? Because it's taking us time to put these in place. And unfortunately, not for, unfortunately, fortunately, our teachers are still working every day teaching their students. So, we can't pull teachers from classes to help them rearrange classrooms or to help do some of these activities that we've done. Our maintenance staff has stepped up. Some of our sports teams have done some service work and come back in the building after practices to help us move things around. It's been all hands on deck and we're anxious to get students back in the building as well. So, I know I didn't answer all the questions there, but that's where we're at. It's a continuous process. Again, the cohorts will go out Friday. And then the following Tuesday, the actual class schedules, and I would anticipate that they're going to be very, very similar to what your students' class schedule was prior to, you know, way back in July. We didn't alter class schedules. We didn't move, we didn't do, we didn't blow up the schedule and try and rebuild it. We used what we had as our core. We had, again, we have had to move some specials around the elementary building. We have had to extend some things out of there. So, the schedule's probably a little bit different in the elementary building than what originally was. But middle school, high school, we're looking at nine period, nine 45-minute periods a day, just as we would under normal conditions, running our bell schedule. So, thank you. That was a whole lot of talking. Yes, please.
Just one thing, and I don't think it was brought up, but I know like even in my home district, or my other district, it has been, will students be physically wiping down desks, middle school and high school?
Great question. We can't request the students to do that. We will have hand sanitizer. There will be disinfectant wipes. There will be an extra mask in every classroom. If a student so chooses to want to wipe down their area, they can do that. We will not be requesting students to come. The health department was very emphatic that we cannot require students to clean their, to sanitize their work area. And, but there will be, and I think I put that in the thing that students, any student that wants to, there will be, again, we've got, we're a little additional time between class change. So, if a student comes into a classroom, wants to grab some disinfectant wipes and wipe down their desk before they sit down, absolutely, absolutely. And we're building an extra time for hand washing. We're going to spend some time with the students. It seems a little silly, but we're going to go over the 20 seconds and the importance of the friction in the hand washing and just how important that is. And also, we're still looking to build in, we've got recess in the elementary. I know the question came up with mask breaks in the middle school and high school. We're still exploring some things. Obviously, if they're out at lunch and sitting outside, we can get the mask off then. But depending on what maybe some of the special classes are, we're looking at individual situations. Again, we want to keep a minimum of two protocols in place. So, if there's no mask, we need social distancing and we need the desk shield in place. We think that those two protocols are adequate. That's another question that I have posed to the health department, waiting for an answer on that.
I also had a question. So, is it, we're putting the responsibility, and it should be, on the parents not to send their children to school if they're not feeling well, obviously. But once they get here, is there any standard in place where they'll actually be temperature-tested as they come in, just like we were today?
Yeah, we, you know, very simply put, the machines that some districts bought to temperature-test on the way in range anywhere from $20,000 to $60,000 apiece. And we got $62,000 in CARES money. So, we would have been able to buy one machine and not service both buildings. We decided early on, we were going to ask parents to temperature-check before they, because we were also told that it's, you're probably not going to get an accurate reading if your temperature check the students after they get off the bus for a variety of reasons. We were at a bus clinic and they said, that's probably not the best time to check them when they're actually coming through the doors. I know that Euclid bought some of the portable stations that the students will walk through and it'll automatic, but they have to, they have to be manned. It's a district of 4,000 or 5,000 students. I don't, I don't know how you do that at that time. We limit our entrances. Middle school, high school will still come through these front doors here. Elementary will still come through the back doors, the buses, and then the side doors for the additional students there. But we did not purchase the machines. We took, as soon as we priced them out, we just thought it was cost prohibitive with a machine that whenever this thing's over, that we wouldn't know what we'd begin to do with a $60,000 temperature machine.
Yeah. And buying like a hand, more of those hand ones?
We've got 12 in the district right now. We can certainly buy more. The nurses will have those and use those frequently. We're going to ask the teachers to check themselves. You know, I live with a nurse, so I don't get out of the house without my temperature getting checked in the morning. But some other things that have come out, the reliance on the temperature check, there's also, two or three weeks ago, there was some varying discussion about whether the temperature check was actually a part in some facets of this. So, there, you know, it's not the be-all, end-all. It's just one of the criteria there. And again, if you look at that list of symptoms, that list of symptoms, that's the flu, that's the cough, that's allergies, that's a whole lot of other things that are very common this time of year. And just to have, you know, and I don't want our nurses diagnosing. I've been very emphatic with them. I said, listen, assess symptoms. If you call a parent and say, your child's telling me they have a sore throat, they have a sore throat. Don't, we don't tell them they've got tonsillitis. We don't tell them they've got strep throat. The symptom is a sore throat. The symptom is a runny nose. The symptom is a headache. Please tell the parents what the symptoms are. And if there's multiple symptoms, please ask the parents to have them see their family doctor. Or if the parent knows that their child has allergies or something this time of year, it may be very easily explained. Because we've got all kinds of kids with different types of allergies that it's very common, always has been. And we're in the fall right now. There's a lot of fall allergies that are, we just know we go through. I've seen that clinic in the fall pretty well loaded with lots of runny noses and watery eyes. Again, those symptoms fall onto that list. That doesn't mean that they have COVID naturally.
I just wanted to add, because of the wonderful nastiness I see on social media from some of our parents, that it's going to be so important that people do their job as parents, especially if they want us to go from this hybrid to five days a week. Like, parents are going to have to check symptoms. Parents are going to have to not send kids when they're sick, you know. And to read some of the things that people are putting out there, like, don't get your kid tested if, you know, they have the symptoms. Well, if parents are truly going to be living that way, I don't see us being back full go. So, it's going to take this community stepping up and doing the right thing, whether they believe in a, that this is a pandemic or not, whether they believe that COVID is real or not. Like, it's time for everyone to step up. And, you know, we need to do what's right to ensure that we can get back five days a week.
And I don't want to be delusional about this either. As I talked with some superintendents on Monday, one of the superintendents said they, some parents came to, came to the board meeting and said, what's the big deal? We had a sleepover two weeks ago. We've had parties at the house. And it's a district that's had some outbreaks. And it's like, I know the coaches and the band directors had these discussions way back in the fall. We can do all, everything that we want between our hours if, when they leave our doors, if there are, if people aren't kind of keeping an eye on it, if they're, we can't control once they leave or their time away from us. So, we hope that they're doing the right thing. We hope that they do the right thing and keep students out. But I also, you know, we can, we can do what we do during our hours of operation. We'll do the best we can. We need some help. You're right, outside.
Actually, this is a lifestyle change, what it is. You know, this time period, whether you like it or not, because I saw, I see the same things as you see too as well. You know, don't wear the mask, don't worry about it. This is not real. I mean, it's a lifestyle change. And if we want to continue the way that we are and continue with the activities that we are, we're going to have to do, we're going to have to get through this together. That's it. End of story.
I think another important comment there was from Ms. Kometz tonight, had to do with communications. We need to hear from you as the parents of the students so that we can understand how the programs are working. Because this is new for all of us. Everyone here, this is a once in, hopefully a once-in-a-lifetime event. And we need to hear from the parents so that we understand and we can engage what we can, we can gauge what's effective and what may need some tweaking. So, thank you for your comments and keep them coming. Thank you.
No question. We need to ramp up getting things out there. And I'm, from the beginning, this was going to be done in stages. I know people wanted additional information to be able to make the decisions. We were still figuring some of that out. And we're still, if you take a look at what we sent out today, that there's probably 12 pages of stuff, but there's still more, more to come. There's still more things that we need to do. There's still more things that we're working on right now. So, as we're checking things off, and quite honestly, through some of the emails, there were some things that we hadn't thought of. So, those get added to the list. So, you know, we're reading every email and, you know, because the question came up about, one of the parents said, well, what about, what if my student's an athlete after school? Now, they're coming from home dressed. Will they be able to, we really quite honestly hadn't even thought about it. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to do what the, what some of the teams are doing right now, where they, they will go in in increments and go in, put their uniform on, and then come out to their practice. That's what football's done. They go in, they're never all in the locker room at one time. They go in in stages and they come out in stages. So, we're going to have to make sure that we put those in place for winter sports as we're getting close to winter sports right now. So, and those are things that we didn't think of. So, parents, please know that we do read the emails and we do, there are additional things on there that we, we haven't thought of. And we're, again, we got to check those boxes off. We have to put some things in place to make sure that we cover those instances. Are we going to cover all of them? No. But that's why this thing's going to be very fluid from the get-go. When we get back in the building, we're going to continue to get emails. This is happening, this isn't happening. We're going to have to make adjustments as we go to keep kids in the building and to get them all back in the building.
You know, Mr. Evans, you invited me to the recent professional development day for the staff. And I think I heard Mr. Young say that he began working on, kind of as a point person on this return-to-school plan. Was it in June? I think, so this is not, this is something that's taken months of planning. And even now, we're still in a transitional point of going from remote to hybrid to hopefully in full in session. But it's just taken an incredible amount of time and effort on so many people's parts to just get to the point of where we're at now. But it is a very deliberate process, clearly, by the time that's been invested by our staff. I don't have anything else. Do you have anything, Mr. Evans?
Just a couple of comments that actually are not COVID-related. I took resolutions out. I took one out to value last night that the board passed as a thank you for the offsite learning centers. I'll also get, I've got Cogah Heights and Broken Heights on my agenda. You see that we've got some play materials here. One of the unfortunate things about with the cancellation of school last spring, we were never able to have the play performed that the students had practiced many, many weeks for. We tried to, and then actually at one point in time, the police said, no, you can't bring anybody in the building. We were going to try and do it on a Sunday just for the parents. Mr. Michaels has designated this Wednesday and next Wednesday. The kids were in today in limited numbers. They were recording the play. We're going to release the play on October 31st, the video of the play. Today looked fantastic. Thank you to Mr. Michaels. The easiest thing for him to do would have been to say, well, we're going to move on to next year's play. They gathered those kids back up. They were in today. They were in costume. It made me feel like the building was a little bit vibrant again. To have kids back in the building, that's certainly a big difference. And as I said, the cohort's about Friday and then the schedule's up on Tuesday. The teachers have been at the table with us the entire time, with us working out schedules, answering questions, what's working, what's not working, what's best, what's not best. So, we've involved the teachers in every step of this conversation in an effort to get students back in the building as well. And that's it for me.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
More than enough for me.
Thank you. Okay. Well, let's move on then to agenda item five, treasurer's business. Mr. Muchio?
Thank you, Mr. Dobbins. Couple of recommendations tonight. Recommendation 5A, approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of the September 23, 2020 regular meeting is found in attachment T1. Recommendation 6A, motion to approve purchase orders over 5,000 is found in attachment T2. 6B, motion to approve new vendors to the school district per W9s attached is found in attachment T3. Ask for those recommendations for tonight.
Okay. Those would be, may I have a motion then for approval of the treasurer's consent agenda items? Ms. Shukert moves?
Second.
Mr. Nevin seconds. Any discussion?
Yeah, just wanted to point out a couple of things. For 6A, the approval of purchase orders, we only have four tonight. And first is NEONET for $37,980. That's for 180 Chromebooks along with the management licenses. We're purchasing that out of our coronavirus relief grant fund, which is Fund 510. There's a little bit of Fund 003 for the overage, but the majority, 99% of that, is coming out of that grant fund. Number two is the college board AP exams. That's for $14,000. That's a blanket purchase order for advanced placement testing for the 2020-21 school year. Number three is the Chagrin Valley Conference, $5,755.75. That's for our conference dues for athletics. And the last purchase order we have tonight is Bond Chemical. That's $5,316.68. And that's for a boiler chemical mix tanks, two of them, relay controllers along with chemicals for the high school and elementary school boilers, for our boilers to efficiently work that we have in place. We have one W9 tonight on the agenda, and that's just for the desk dividers that we're looking to purchase in the future.
We have, we currently have 500 desk dividers. They're all in the elementary right now. We need a bigger divider for middle school, high school. We found a company out of Florida that has them. They're the cheapest price that we've been able to find on. They can get them to us within 10 days. So, that, that, we need a company approved this evening and then, so we can process that paperwork to get those dividers in.
Can I ask, so will there be those plastic dividers in every room?
Yes.
Every room?
Yes, and in the lunchrooms.
Okay. Very good. Is there any further?
I have one other quick question to you. And Mr. Walsh probably has told me this before. The asset life of the Chromebooks, is that, that's seven years?
It's approximately seven years.
At seven? Yeah, I mean, barring any sort of other, you know.
Is it that the Chromebook was actually making back your, sort of, what year you were?
Is that when they go out of, when they're not supported anymore? Or is that, is that kind of, or can we extend the life on even those two as well?
Kind of like people will not support anymore after that.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? If there isn't, then let's go to vote, please.
Mrs. Shukert?
Aye.
Mr. Nevin?
Aye.
Mrs. Etter?
Aye.
Mr. Suchak?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Item eight on the agenda, Mr. Muchio's discussion and comments?
Just have a couple of items for discussion tonight. 8A is going to be the November 2025 year forecast timeline present. Just going over that timeline that we discussed at the last board meeting that we had. So, the five-year forecast must be submitted by November 30th of each year and then also again in May. So, for our timeline for the November 2025 year forecast, we're looking at, number one, a October 27, 2020 finance committee review meeting of the November 2025 year forecast. Number two, November 4, our regular board meeting would be a work session review of the November 2025 year forecast. And then number three, November 18, at our regular board meeting would be the Board of Education approval of the five-year forecast. So, that's our tentative timeline that we have in place. 8B, GPD band room structural review status update. So, just wanted to provide an update for everyone tonight. So, some background. During summer 2020, Jim Zerbola, our main supervisor, found that the band room masonry base was in poor shape. Myself, Mr. Evans, along with Jim Zerbola examined. And we had GPD, which is our district architectural firm, examine further. GPD recommended performing a structural review of the band room masonry base for a cost of $4,650. GPD recommended performing a structural review of the bandroom masonry base for a cost of $4,650. As of July 31st, GPD completed approximately 30% of the bandroom structural review. Then on 8/27/2020, which was Thursday, Jim Zerbola, Mr. Evans, Mr. Young, our assistant superintendent, myself, met with Jason Noldy, the project manager, and Mark Salapek, the principal in charge, to review the status. Then again, 9/9/2020, that was our September 9th board meeting. We discussed and updated the board on where we were at. Currently, right now, GPD has completed the bandroom structural review, and we have asked them to present at a board meeting, which would be our November 4th work session board meeting. So, we've asked GPD to come and present what they found as far as that review goes. So, at that point in time, we'll have an idea on which direction, you know, we want to go and if we want to go forward or not at that point. Item 8C, Healthcare Cost Containment Committee. So, I'll just kind of read my little excerpt that I have here. In both union agreements, CHAT and CHASE, CHATs are certified, CHASEs are classified, there is verbiage of a Health Cost Containment Committee. We have met a few times during my time here and recently it came to my attention that this committee should have two representatives from the board of their own choosing. I went back and checked the committee appointments from our January 8th, 2020 board meeting. Didn't see anyone on that committee. My recommendation tonight would be to either appoint two board members or at our next board meeting for this committee that we have. The committee is comprised of CHASE and CHAT members, the treasurer, and representatives from the board. The purpose of this committee is to examine ways of cost containment regarding health benefits, cost increases to the district. The nature of this committee is only advisory. This committee will not act as a formal bargaining venue. Any recommendations made by the committee as a whole may be brought to each constituency for consideration. And any proposed changes to the contract in regard to health benefits is subject to ratification by both parties. So, just in short, there's a committee in place. When I first started here, we met, maybe in my entire tenure here, for almost two and a half, three years, we've only met three times. And as we were looking at the fine-tuned language, because we're getting closer to, you know, looking at a change to make, and I'll talk a little bit about that. But there was verbiage in both the CBA for CHAT and CHASE that said two board members would be on it. So, I went back and talked to people on the committee and they didn't know about it either. So, it's kind of new to all of us. But one thing that this committee wanted to look at, we're okay with our healthcare at the moment, but it's our vision in dental, that care for the members here at the district, so all of the staff. So, we're looking at, you know, our current vendor, which is Medical Mutual, and we're possibly looking to, you know, go in a different direction. So, we're just shopping our benefits at this point in time. So, you know, tonight, if, during the board section of the board meeting, you know, if the board wants to go and appoint, you know, the two members from the board to that committee, again, it's just advisory. And then whatever decision comes out of that committee comes to the full board for review as we would go. So, everybody has their say otherwise. Or we can wait till the next board meeting to appoint those two also. We are looking to make a change potentially come January 1st, 2021. So, we need a little time to orchestrate that change too behind the scenes. So, you know, if tonight does work, that'd be perfect world. But if not, next meeting, that still works under the timeline we're looking at too. And these meetings that would be scheduled for the healthcare committee, since they are comprised of both CHAT and CHASE members, it kind of works perfect during the day. So, between like our 8 to 4, 9 to 5 schedule with everybody here. So, those are the times people typically look to schedule those meetings. But again, it's advisory and then a formal decision comes here to the board. And my last discussion item would be 8D, and this is for our 2020 OSBA Virtual Capitol Conference. So, just an FYI, I have everyone signed up right now for the Capitol Conference, which is virtual. We approved that registration at the 9/23/2020 board meeting. OSBA will email out the specifics on how to sign up for the virtual sessions that we have a week or so before the conference starts. And the conference, I believe, starts, what, November 8th?
7.
7.
7 through the 10th.
Close. The sessions are listed on OSBA's website, and I have the link here if anybody wants to look. My guess is the virtual sessions will be in Zoom and we'll have passwords to get in. And then also, Mr. Nevin, for you, you're our delegate. I emailed that information to them. They should be mailing you directly the delegate notebook. And then they're going to email you on the logins for both the briefing for the annual business meeting, which is Thursday, October 22nd, and then the annual business meeting, which is the big one on Thursday, October 29th. If there are no questions, that's all I have for tonight.
I have just one question, procedurally on item 8C.
Yes.
We talked about having the option of perhaps moving forward with appointments tonight or waiting to the next meeting. And I think I understand that we could wait to the next meeting without a adverse consequence. And the other thing that I'm wondering is, we already approved a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Are we allowed in the middle of the meeting to revise the agenda? I'm not, I don't want to pick cares, but I want to do it right.
You don't have to vote on a committee member, so that could just be part of a discussion.
Oh, okay.
Who wants to be the president of healthcare?
Aye.
Okay.
You know, like, it's not a vote.
Okay. It's great. Then we can proceed tonight or the next meeting. Does the group want to do anything tonight?
I say let's wait a little while.
And I would want to preface that that, you know, a lot of those meetings take place during the day. So, availability becomes an issue. And I don't want to put someone in a situation where you want to be part of the committee on, all of a sudden, the meetings all take place at times and you're not available. So, we kind of do it when we've got captive members here and we can do those meetings. So, generally speaking, those meetings do take place during like regular workday hours, so.
And currently, the members that are on it would be myself, Yelixa Rodriguez, Johnny Roy, Lindsay Andreski, Chad Robinson, Sonny Spadaro, Frank Dumzalski, and Karikovich.
Does anyone have an interest, given these parameters? Does anyone?
I can't, I work.
There you go.
As much as I want to be on it, I, there's no way I could do it.
Understood. And as Mr. Muchio said, it's an advisory role, there's no decision-making. So, Ms. Etter or Mr. Suchacki? I mean, I'm okay doing it, but I don't want to get ahead of anyone else, so.
If you need me, I'll do it. If somebody else wants to do it, it's fine too.
Okay. Well, I'll be happy to participate as one member and then between Mr. Suchacki and Ms. Etter, flip a coin or?
You're welcome to do it if you'd like.
You said there's what, one or two meetings a year, probably?
Yeah.
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 I remember being on this before, I think.
Okay.
I think.
Okay.
But that's fine.
All right. Very good. Keep Ms. Etter and I written informed and we'll vote from there. Thank you. No other discussion items? Okay. So, moving on to number nine, Mr. Evans' superintendent's business.
A motion to authorize payment to selected OHSA playoff workers for sectional district soccer, soccer finals, regional football, sectional basketball games, regional wrestling matches held during the 2021 school year that we would host at the attached pay rate. Payments will not exceed a flat fee amount allocated to CHS for hosting the playoff games. And the district funds will not be used to pay assigned workers. All that money comes from the state. B, approved request rental of Ralph P. Adams Stadium for Trinity High School for an event on October 10th. Motion to approve the rental request of Ralph P. Adams Stadium for Trinity for their playoff football game on October the 10th. I ask that those two items be approved.
Okay. May I have a motion then for approval of the superintendent's business consent agenda items? Okay, Mr. Nevin moves. Mr. Suchacki seconds. Discussion?
And those are all pre-designated by the OHSA, and that's simply money in, money out.
Okay.
The reason that there's not a dollar amount on the rental for the stadium for Trinity is because we're waiting, because the state changed what their normal rental fee was because they expanded the playoffs this year. And we're waiting to see what that final number is going to be. And essentially, whatever that number is, is what Trinity's going to pay for the stadium rental. One thing that we did find out yesterday is that playoff tickets will be $12 apiece, and that's not going to make some people happy. We don't set that price, the state sets that price. We get, like I said, the only money that we get from hosting the playoff game are concessions and then what the workers kind of, we don't get a dollar, $2 from the tickets on that, so that's.
Is there, which party is responsible for cleaning and maintenance and that type of thing afterwards, before and after the event? Is that on us or does?
Trinity will pay, pays our custodians.
That's what I think.
Yeah. Whatever our custodial rate is that we have already in our contract, that they pay that custodial rate. And we'll have a faculty manager that night too as well.
Okay. So, there's a rental fee that's to be determined and then?
And then in addition is the hours for that employee that's here.
Very good. Okay. Thank you.
So, in essence, renting our stadium should have no cost to us.
It has no cost to us, yeah.
Is there any other discussion?
And somewhere down the line, Trinity is currently using Bedford for their home games, and they are actually interested in next year playing their home games here. So, we will work on that as we get there. That'll be a whole different negotiation because that's not a state-set number. That's, I'm going to find out what they're paying over at Bedford right now. This, we're closer, it's a better setup for them, so they are very interested in bringing their home games here next year.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, then we can move to a vote, please.
Mr. Nevin?
Aye.
Mr. Suchacki?
Aye.
Mrs. Etter?
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert?
Aye, but I'm wondering if 10A should be on?
We'll just vote on that, we'll do 10A second.
Gotcha. Aye.
And Mr. Dobbins?
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Item 10, Mr. Evans, agreements, contracts, and memberships.
And then that's the motion to approve the three-year agreement with National Web Check Program Services and Equipment for completion of FBI, BCI background checks by Cogah High Schools. That's, we do our own checks here. That's a three-year contract with a firm that does the, that actually processes those checks for us.
Okay. So, we're going to consider that separately. So, may I have a motion to approve item 10A, please?
Submove.
Ms. Schukert moves. Mr. Nevin seconds. Discussion? I think we just heard from Mr. Evans on that? Okay. If there's no further discussion, let's move to vote then.
Mrs. Schukert?
Aye.
Mr. Nevin?
Aye.
Mrs. Etter?
Aye.
Mr. Suchacki?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Item 11, we did item 11 already, so we're now into item 12, board policy and bylaw reviews.
And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Young to give you a synopsis of what the policies are, changes.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. This is the exciting part of the evening. So, from last month until all the way through this January, you'll have about 40 board policies that will be updated. So, this is our second batch of five batches that are coming your way. So, I provided a summary of the policies that are for first review as an attachment for you to look at. This comes to us from Neola and provides a brief summary of what's being either revised with policy we already have in the books or what would be a new policy. So, some of these you're going to see maybe, they seem like they're a little bit out of place. Some of them came our way late last spring. And last spring, there weren't many boards adopting policies not related to COVID. So, if you wonder, you know, why we're just now adopting high school diploma requirements that went into effect last October, it's because it took time for the policy to be written and then we had, the pandemic broke. So, we're getting things to you in as timely of a fashion as possible. So, the first policy is Policy 2464. This deals with gifted education and identification. This is a revised policy. Ohio Administrative Code 3301-5115, that went into effect July 27th of 2018. Some of the key changes you're going to see in the policy all occur on page two. So, if you're looking at the policies themselves, they've added the ability for parents to opt out of gifted services. Just because you qualify for gifted doesn't mean you have to accept. So, that was not part of the old policy, but is part of the new policy. In addition, timelines have been added. Before, it was more open-ended, and sometimes districts would drag their feet, so to speak, on hitting certain deadlines like notifications, notifications for parents transferring into districts, notifications to parents who qualified. So, it's tightened the timelines up a little bit, and you're going to see that reflected on page two. So, this policy puts us into, in alignment with Ohio Revised Code and the Ohio Administrative Code. The next policy is Policy 5200. This is an attendance policy. If you were around back in 2017 when House Bill 410 broke, you'll know that we, as a school district, were notifying families. It was a very uncomfortable process to have to notify families about absenteeism, especially when they were excused absences from medical purposes. We were required by law to notify based on a certain number of absences, 65 hours, for example, required certain notifications. Well, it's good to see that we now have medical excuse is being added to this policy. Medical excuses, they will not go into the count for that student total of absenteeism of hours. So, you know, that's been brought about because of common sense, I think. But also, you're going to see the language on page two that references quarantine language. So, we know that we've got the pandemic we are dealing with. So, you will see quarantine language and information related to COVID-19 in here. And then on pages four and five, this is just for the 2021 school year, addressing certain requirements with attendance and how we should handle those. Absenteeism, this was part of the Remote Learning Plan that was adopted back in July and Mr. Evans submitted to the state of Ohio. So, we had already addressed this attendance piece in our Remote Learning Plan. This puts it into policy for the 2021 school year. So, as you read through that, you'll see that we are in alignment. But I think the biggest benefit is, is that you've got a student with a legitimate medical excuse, has doctor's notes, potentially has 504 plans that cover that medical excuse. We don't have to continue to notify those parents of absenteeism because those will not count into the hours. So, this is much-needed relief when it comes to tracking attendance. Policy 5460, this is the graduation requirement revision for our policy. So, House Bill 166, this was a, when it was all said and done, it was a 2,000-plus-page document that came out last, a year ago last summer, so 2019. Went into effect in October of 2019. One of the big changes that came about with that House bill was changes to the graduation requirements. And if anybody's been trying to track graduation requirements in the last several years, you'll know that we currently have three different sets of graduation requirements on the books for our students. The class of 2021 has a different set of graduation requirements than the class of 2022. And the class of 2023 and beyond has a completely different set of graduation requirements than the previous two cohorts. What this policy allows us to do is allows us to apply any of those three cohorts or any of those three requirements to all three graduation classes. So, the class of 2021 can use the class of 2023's graduation requirements in addition to their own. Now, it doesn't work the other direction. So, the class of 2023 can't say, hey, I like the class of 2021's graduation requirements, let's use those. It allows current seniors to use graduation requirements of students that are behind them, which you can't use those of students that are ahead of you. So, what this is doing is this is allowing us to get in line with the most current set of graduation requirements for the class of 2023, which obviously still has the credit requirement. And you're going to see the listing of our credits. The state of Ohio requires a minimum of 20 credits to graduate high school. At Cogah Heights, we have a higher standard than that. We require 22 credits. When I was principal back in, I think it was my last year here back 2018, we had approximately 80% of our students who had 24 credits or more when they graduated. So, hitting 22 is not a problem. In fact, if you look at our graduation rates, we continuously boast a 95 to 100% graduation rate. So, our students are not just hitting Ohio's credit requirement, but the higher one by Cogah Heights. There's also a competency students have to have, which is either hit by a test score, 684 on the geometry, sorry, the Algebra 1 test or the English 2 test. And then you have a readiness piece. Well, the new readiness piece with the class of 2023 introduces the concept of SEALs. And maybe you have talked about this in the past, obviously I wasn't here for the past two years. But graduation SEALs are now part of the graduation requirements. There are, I believe, 12 SEALs available to students. You have state SEALs, there are nine of those. And then there are three SEALs that can be local. And Boards of Education are required to adopt at least one local SEAL. I believe we are going to make way for all three. Now, students must earn two SEALs. They either have to be two state SEALs, or they can be one state SEAL and one local SEAL. Achieving two local SEALs will not meet the graduation requirement. So, there's language on the Department of Education's website about what these SEALs mean and what students have to do in order to achieve the state SEALs. The local SEALs are done, again, locally. So, one of those is a community service SEAL that students can earn. We require 60 hours in a normal. We we require 60 60 hours in a normal year. We may have to prorate that based on the COVID situation, but that's something that Mr. Evans and the administrative team will talk about. But it introduces the the piece with seals. So this gets us up to date and aligned with the graduation requirements that went to effect officially October of 2019. The next policy, 2460.02, this was also in House Bill 166. This required school districts to have policy for how they're going to identify students who are at risk of not qualifying for a high school diploma. A part of that that's not in the policy, but some background is that schools are also required to develop graduation plans. This was starting with last year's freshman class, so with the current sophomores and every class beyond that, we need to develop graduation plans so that we start getting students talking about what comes after high school. Along the way, then, we have to identify when students start to fall off of those plans and are labeled then as at-risk. This policy defines what it means to be at-risk in our district. So this is a completely brand-new policy. Page one talks about the criteria for identifying an at-risk student, and then on page two, it talks about what the possible interventions and supports would be for that student. All right, and then the last two, they go together. So you've got 5610, which is removal, suspension, expulsion, and permanent exclusion of a student, and then you have 5611, which is due process rights. And the big thing here is that you're going to see the language which falls in line with the nondiscrimination and anti-harassment policies, specifically the Title IX policy that you officially adopted at the last board meeting. You're going to see language where it talks about a preponderance of evidence, and you'll see language where it talks about retention of investigatory records. So those two pieces have been interjected into both policies. You will see preponderance of evidence, and you also see what's required with respect to retention of records over a certain period of time with the with the Title IX policy we adopted last meeting. That was a seven-year period of time, and this again falls in line with with that particular policy. So that's a summary with some additional information and background added to those policies for first review. Okay? Anything else?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda, item 13, board discussion and comments. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share with the group this evening? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Schuchert.
I just want to share just a third shout-out, and I'm going to make it so that you don't get emotional. But but seriously, I don't know that everybody understands what goes into just the workload right now. And so thank you, thank you, thank you for what you're doing and the team that we've put into place, you know, your administrative team. You're doing incredible things, and it's not always it's not always obvious what you're doing. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that are happening, but I just want to let you know that I'm very thankful to have you at the head of the ship, and you're doing a great job. So thank you.
Just thank everybody involved because it's it's there's a lot of work. And, you know, I I know that one of my principals was here till 2 o'clock last night because I got an alarm call, and they were in the still in the building. I got some of my principals have been in over the weekend, just trying to hammer some of the details out of this so that we answer the questions that parents need answers so we can get them back. And when we get them back, we can keep them back and get them all back in the building. So we're not we don't get into a flip-flop situation. So when when we're back, we're back to stay. That's that's the goal.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Well, I have, Ms. Edder, do you have something?
I don't know if you're going to go with Gary first.
Gary?
Nothing for the season.
Okay, Ms. Edder, then.
Well, I just wanted to share some information with you that I'm still in discussion with the ESC about possibility of their communications, public relations services that they offer and how we might take advantage of them. I spoke I've spoken to two different people at the ESC so far, and I'm having another discussion tomorrow with a third person. And it's basically to see if, number one, if they would if we want them to recruit a communications person like we do recruit for other positions here or work with the communications team that they have already in place. Again, it it comes down to like an à la carte kind of service, and that might be something for us to to look into that might be more cost-effective than what we had in the past.
Can I ask, so isn't that something that Mr. Evans should be looking into rather than us going out and seeking that?
I'm not I'm not sure what you mean by that.
I I I mean, I just feel like communications, we know, we hear from Mrs. Komats, it's something that's lacking. I agree with you, Mrs. Komats, as as a parent, there's times where I'm really confused too, and I'm a board member, and I should know some of these things. But but I just feel like if if we're going out individually and and doing things like I feel like that should really be our our administrators doing that.
Well, it's not like I'm making a decision for the school district. I'm just looking into what the possibility is and what it might cost us. And I I mean, I think that's being a responsible board member, to be honest with you.
I just I feel like.
It's not like I'm making a decision.
I feel like we're trying to dragging our feet in this whole communications thing, and it's something that's lacking. We need to get on it. We need to figure out what we're doing either with Erin Graham or or go another direction. Like, I feel like we're going into like now two months, and so so it's something that needs to be expedited, so. What was that?
Didn't we already approve Erin last month?
We didn't approve Erin.
No, she her contract is nothing. It was pulled.
They pulled it.
It was pulled, and we, you know, that's something like as a board, we might not all agree, and that's totally acceptable, but like we need to we need to brave the storm and and be able to keep things on the agenda. And, you know, if we don't all agree, okay, but but something like communications, I think to pause that right now is is detrimental.
Okay, it's I don't know what you want. I don't know what you're expecting from my from from me at this point, but I feel like what I'm doing is going in the direction that we need to do. We need to do something, and I'm I'm looking into something right now that I would be presenting to the board for discussion and determination of how we go forward. And I think there's and and not to belabor this, but I think we really need to figure out, like, when you talk about a communications position and communications that go out to the to the the parents, the teachers, the staff, and all of that, we might be talking about two different types of communication. When you hired someone as a communications specialist or a media specialist, what I've experienced in the past since I was in that business is totally different. It's it's different. My expectation from a communications specialist is to almost in like, you know, how we have the gold ticket in elementary school, catch them while they're doing something good and tell them about it, tell the world about that. That's the kind of thing that a communications specialist should be doing for our district. Not communicating to the members of our community, our parents, our teachers, and that. It's getting the communication out there, getting something published, getting news stories, getting, you know, just getting some kind of update or things that are happening good in our district out to everyone. And I'm not sure that that actually happened. I don't think that what we put into place as a communications specialist, we got the results that we needed. Now, granted, there was a whole turn of events, and, you know, our our direction went a different way because of the pandemic. So now we still don't have someone in place, and and yeah, maybe the communications is lacking, but the communications that of how things are happening in our district and getting that information to our members, our our parents, our teachers, is different, a different role than a communications specialist.
I think you're talking about the difference between a communications specialist and a public relations specialist. I in in quite honestly, I those can be wrapped into one, and my my number-one concern is, and I agree with Colleen, I'm behind on communications. And and I've I've reached out to Erin. Erin and I are going to meet via Zoom next week, and I if I told Erin if I was going to bring her proposal forward that I wanted a a year-long plan, month by month, what the communications plan was going to be for the year, what communications were going to go out and when they were going to go out. And in addition to that, when things good things are happening, when Katie Davis gets a $21,000 scholarship from Baldwin-Walsh University for four years, we then add that to the things because those are things that we weren't expecting. We certainly add that to, but we but but my goal with Erin on Monday is to sit down and do a plan for the year so that when I when her contract is submitted to the board that you see what the plan for the year is too, and either the plan meets it or doesn't meet the expectations of the board at that point.
I guess I guess it comes down to really like, you know, when was it possible to get us back on the on a future agenda item to get it get voted? Because I think we're at a point right now, it's like, I mean, Mr. Evans, you're doing a fantastic job at this, getting everything and everybody back in the we're going to put more pressure on you without somebody. And I think we have to make a decision one way or another, and let's let's move far ahead. So if it's possible, can we get it on the October 21 agenda, and let's vote on it and be done with it one way or another?
Goals, I'm 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 going to meet with her Monday, and quite honestly, the the points that were brought up by the parents tonight, probably 50 to 60% of those are lack of communication on our parts of them, some of those things that we knew and either didn't get out or some of those things that we did not disseminate in the right way. So quite honestly, both parents that spoke tonight hit hit the nail right on the head with some of the communications that have come out from us, and I I'd be lying if I if I said I disagreed with them because that but but again, that there's a systematic plan that needs to be put in place so that especially when we're going through items like this that are you haven't gone through before, a professional knows what that checklist is that needs to go out, and and that 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 needs to get out, and it you keep there's no there's no such thing as overcommunication in in this instance. So if I sent out 12 pages today and another 12 pages tomorrow, then that's the way it is at under these circumstances. Well, is there an ebb and flow to that during the year? Absolutely. There absolutely is. But but there's also some constant community. There's, you know, we talked long and hard about a a couple newsletters throughout the course of the year that that we at one point in time had in place and we we didn't. So that a plan has to be put together, and that's Erin and I are going to meet on Monday to have that discussion via Zoom, see what that looks like here. So month by month, the Board of Education is going to know, here's here's what they can expect communication-wise on a regular basis, not and then throw the rest of it and throw the gold ticket in and all the rest of that stuff in with it. So when those things happen, when the scholarships happen, when the awards happen, that our students do a great job of earning, when the when the play happens, that we can then add those to that list of things that are that we know are going to go out on a regular basis. So.
I think it's a great strategy. That's a great strategy.
If I could just add to the conversation, in January, we, as we've done for the last three years, I believe, maybe four years, named you to be our district spokesperson. And so I believe that that confers upon you or subsumes, actually, the idea of identifying what our communication needs are and finding the right vendor to provide those services. And so I I wholly support what you're doing and look to hear from you so that we can hopefully, as Mr. Damon said, can move this forward at the next meeting and 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 get you a partner to to help with these communications that are so important.
And that was probably maybe the Erin last year. Erin doesn't know what she doesn't know. She didn't know what the expectation was. Because it never sat down and said, listen, I my expectation is that we get these these newsletters out, one in January, one in April, whatever that was.
Things totally change. I mean, let's be honest, when we hired her, our idea was we're going to be up for a lobby. We've got this huge facilities plan that we're going to like, you know, we're going to need somebody to communicate that in addition to, you know, constant communication about just building what's going on in the building. So, you know, again, COVID is a nasty thing, but it's really kind of flip-flopped our needs for communication in a different way, too.
But in all due respect, too, we had her in place during COVID. She was in place. She was our person to help us with communication.
Agreed, she did. I'm not talking I'm talking about right now is when the communication is lacking, the last.
And you're saying it's now, and it wasn't lacking in the spring?
Yes. I think there were other things going on. We we could disagree on it. I I think Erin did a fantastic job.
And just so you know, I didn't just do this on my own either. Mr. Evans and I did have a conversation to move forward on this, just for me to just look into it. Like I like I've said before, I mean, I spent 35 years in broadcast news, and I worked with people through local ESCs to do stories.
I get that, but I think we all bring strings to the table, and we have to be careful because our role is not in those strings. For example, I am a school counselor. I'm not going to be, you know, directing Mr. Evans how to do school counseling here. However, those are conversations we can have, but I think, you know, I think it's important that we are staying in our lane and not micromanaging at times when it could be easy because we have that expertise and that experience. But I I think we need to also, you know, our job as a school board is to put the the two positions that we hire, you know, superintendent and treasurer. We put people that we feel are competent to hire others below them so that they can make the best decision for our students in our district.
And I was just looking at us being good stewards of our money to make sure that we're just looking into the possibility of spending our money a little bit better. That's all I was doing, and I'm researching that. In addition to that, I just want to let everybody know that I'm meeting with the Economic Development Grant Committee with Valley View next Wednesday in regards to a company coming into the into the village. And I'll report on that at our next board meeting.
Have they said anything more about the Greenfield to you, Mrs. Edder, expansion? They started the conversation about a year and a half ago, and then it stopped.
So that was a company that was supposed to come in, and then they they did not.
Okay.
And that might be the Franco company?
He called it the Greenfield Project, and I don't know if that was it was the area underneath the 480 Bridge.
Right.
Where some development took place.
So, again, I have the meetings next week, but my understanding is there was a company that was supposed to come in and then made all the plans to start doing it, and then they did not.
Okay.
And now this is another company that might be taking in that position, in that place.
Okay. I was going to say that seemed like that was moving along, and then we didn't hear another word from them after that, so I don't know what happened.
I'll I'll ask when I go next week.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Edder. Mr. Damon, do you have anything tonight?
Yeah, a couple things. So I actually am I'm amazed, actually, at at everyone in the district, not only from what Mrs. Schuchert said about getting everybody back into school as of the 19th. And I I'm amazed because I I've seen some other things, too. Like, it's amazing job that was done by putting that pep rally together, everybody social distance, get to recognize some of the our athletes that, you know, in in some situations, we didn't think there was going to be a season. I mean, and now there there was, and they're they're successful, and they're recognized, the seniors, the homecoming court. I thought that was outstanding, putting that together. Yesterday, I actually volunteered at the George Cross Invitational for our cross-country team. Excellent. And Mr. Evans was there. Some other individuals were there, too. It was it was it was done really well. I mean, we actually had 10 schools there, social distance, masks, and was able to run a cross-country meeting in Valley View, bringing schools from Cornerstone Christian, West Shiaga, Kirtland, variety of other schools, too. It was really amazing. So the the school continues to amaze me on on everything that we're able to do getting through these times, and and really kudos to everybody. I mean, really, it goes from everyone from athletics to the administration to teachers to the treasurer's office. I I I'm I'm speechless, I mean, at this point. I really am. Couple other things I wanted to do is I want to wish good luck to our fall sports teams as they enter into the playoff seasons. I know that the football team is going to be playing on Friday night, and I know volleyball and soccer and and boys and girls soccer and cross-country are in their playoffs as well here in the next couple of weeks, so wish them all the best. And then lastly, because I couldn't be with him tonight and celebrate with him, I just want to wish my son Jonathan a happy 18th birthday.
Happy birthday, Jonathan.
Happy birthday, Jonathan.
Could have came here.
I have just one item tonight, and this kind of piggybacks what Mr. Mucci was talking about wrote at the Capitol Conference. I had a chance to look at the agenda, and there are a couple of interesting learning sessions, one of which is on Saturday afternoon, so I think I'll be able to catch that one. But what I was also going to. But what I was also going to mention to the group is that it appears that our, one of the benefits of our having done this group registration is that all registrants, from what I read, are entitled to review all presentations through December thirty-one of this year. So if, if people aren't able to see any of these sessions real-time, it looks as though we'll be able to look at those on our, on our leisure, so to speak. So that's all I have. There's nothing else, and we'll move on to future agenda items. Does anyone have anything for inclusion in future agendas? Okay. Item fifteen, Agenda Information. Should be noted, the Board of Education members receive their agenda several days prior to the actual meeting. Thus, they have had considerable opportunity to study it, ask questions, et cetera. Fifteen B, Upcoming Regular Meetings. Wednesdays at seven PM on October twenty-one, November four, November eighteen, and December nine. If there's no further actions, may I have a motion for adjournment? Ms. Schukert moves.
Second.
Mr. Nauman moves, or Mr. Nauman seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, you vote, or we just adjourn? Okay. Do we have to vote or just all in favor? I, okay. Okay, I hear no nay, so we, it is eight-twenty-nine PM, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.